Today is Monday, August 26. This is a regular work session for the City Council, the City of Trinidad. I'd like to remind you that we do not vote, we don't make decisions. It's just for mostly discussion and specifically what it says, we're working. So, thank you all for attending, especially those of you who have applications to boards and commissions, I appreciate it. And also a big welcome to Mr. Valentine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get back, Carter.
That's fine. I came back after lunch, so that's a good sign.
Yeah.
But you're not answering your cell phone, that's a bad sign.
Yeah. They got a new number.
I don't know, you didn't give us one.
I'll do it now.
Okay.
He's gonna keep it that way, too.
Yeah, that's right.
As you can tell, work sessions are very relaxed and not boring. And since I've been mayor, not even the regular sessions are normal. Okay, we only have two items on the agenda. The first item is boards and commissions interviews. So we have four applicants here. I'll read through them. The Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board, we have Margie Fernandelli's here. Historic Preservation Commission, Lisa is here. Housing Authority, Ruben Vigo. Yeah, there he is. I couldn't see you back there, Mr. Vigo. Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission, John Norris. All right, we're all with you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor?
There's two for Main Street. There's two.
Oh, I'm sorry, Molly, I didn't see you back there.
I don't have to do it. I don't.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your name there, I apologize, Molly. So we'll start with Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. Margie's name appears first. We have a set of questions to ask you all. So, does council have any preference? Would you like them just to come up and explain why they do? I think that would be better, just to introduce.
The both of us or by ourselves, what, individually?
Individually. So if you'd come up and just give us an idea of why you're applying?
I'm Margie Fernandelli, ex-director of Historic Main Street. And I'd like to be on this board so that I can continue to see through the initiatives that we've started and that we've worked so hard for over the last two years, including the alley project and our accreditation with the state and the national.
Anything else? Okay, we'll start to the left here. Do you have any questions, Mar?
I want to ask some questions, but in the interest of fairness, I mean, if they're not questions, they'll be.
It's okay, you ask whatever.
So, what, can you speak a little more to the, your involvement with, I'm presuming, the Alley A?
Alley A, okay. So, the Historic Pres- our Historic Main Street has a $12,500 grant that needs to be spent by September 2025. So we are already in the works, we are, and I sent you and all of you the outcome from when we had the consultants down here during Santa Fe Trail Days. So, I think it's been attempted two or three times to finish this alley. It's really big on our heart as Main Street to get it completed, to show diligence, for one, within our board, but also to give the community what it's been asking for, and that is to finish up that alley. So we have a $12,500 grant that the city is going to match a percentage to. The city already has plans for that alley. And so basically what we're doing is we're giving our $12,500 to what the city's plan is so that we can complete it.
Anything else?
Mayor, I have no further questions.
Maureen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, time management. I see you all the time, you seem like you're very busy all the time. Do you, how is the time management working out for you, far as being on, being on this board and maybe ramping up the hours?
Well, I believe that I'm gonna have more life balance with my new position with History Colorado. So, the Historic Main Street group only meets twice a month. But everything that we've already worked for for the last two years is at a pivotal point. So, in my heart, I'd like to stay a lot longer, but if I can only meet the requirements to get designated and to finish the alley, if at that time I feel like the time constraints are too much, I might reconsider, but I'm hoping to stay on. I was a member of this board in 2016 through 2018, and it's really dear to my heart.
Manny?
I really don't have any questions for Marg- Margie, because her work, her work ethic has just shown volumes on Historic Main Street.
Thank you.
You know, we've kind of gone through, gone through together, we keep in contact. Your communication skills are amazing, you know, thank you, and I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So, that's pretty much all.
Frank?
No, I don't have any questions, just looking at your record, I think you'd be an asset to the board, and I'm sure you'll continue to keep working on it, so.
I hope to do so.
I appreciate you putting in for it, we need some good people on that board.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Margie, for everything you've done over the last X amount of years. Just maybe one question, how would you align your personal experience with the organization's, like core values?
Well, my personal core values with History, uh, Main Street, his, I mean, like I said, I've been a member of the board in prior, and they have four pillars that I believe are very strong in my heart, too, for the town. And the biggest, the biggest, I think, the biggest confusion with the community is the difference between Trinidad town of being a designated Main Street versus the board. And so, the board, where my core value lies, is to educate and get buy-in from both the government and from our community to understand that designation so that we can take those pillars that DOLA has set out, revitalization, beautification, preservation, all of those things, and bring it to an understanding on both levels so that we can really catapult and make the differences that need to be made downtown for our town. And that's what I hope to do if I can get back on the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have been fantastic, helping to burn the space to create area and getting not only Main Street oriented the right direction as well as creative district, and I understand you're joining the creative district board as well, is that correct?
That is correct. I am, again, just trying to make sure that the initiatives that we have set in place get followed through and completed. And again, this first time constraint. My passion lies for our community, that's why I took the position in the first place as director. I've since moved on with History Colorado, but that doesn't alleviate my passion for downtown. And so I really want to be on these boards so I can see that what we've done in the last two and a half years actually comes to fruition.
I am so grateful that you're doing that.
Thank you.
It's really helpful. One question that was suggested that we ask is, how would you react to a negative social media post or media article consumed the board or the city? And you have special, I'd like to ask you that question, but you have special insight into that, having also been an employee of the city?
I just pretty much ignore it. To be honest, I don't respond at all. But I can tell you in Nationals over in May when I went to Alabama, sadly, there is a whole course on negative social media, and it's called Q-Tip, Quit Taking It Personally. So I think I would refer back to my notes on that, and basically overall, it just said, "Don't let it get to you and don't respond."
Thank you. Where were you six and a half years ago when I needed you?
You can find it on YouTube, Q-Tip.
Just kidding. I, you know, I know your, you know, your education and your passion fits well with this board. I was just looking at the schedule, and it says Main Street meets on the first Friday at 10 o'clock in the morning?
First Friday, and we used to meet, it depends on our schedule and what we have going on, but it's first and third Fridays, usually speaking.
It just says first Friday.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that won't interfere with your current position.
Well, when I interviewed at History Colorado, I did tell them that I had a lot of irons in the fires and that I wanted to see things transition smoothly. And their feel was that I'm still working in the community and I don't want to burn any bridges, I want to make sure, so they, I want to make sure that, it was important to me to make sure that these things actually took place and happened. But they also are under the understanding that I live and work here, this is my community, and they want me to have those outreaches, so they were happy for me to stay on the boards.
Good, I just want to make sure you don't have any scheduling conflicts. I know you were present that day, we, we did the workshop one in Alley A about Alley A, and, you know, I think it, it's a project that I want to see come to fruition as well.
Yeah, it's really important that we get it done for a number of reasons, but number three, this would be like the third strike, and so I really don't want to let it drop.
No, I think it's, it's important that we continue on. Thank you, Margie.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Margie. Okay, the next.
Did you have another question?
Oh, no.
No, okay.
Molly Smith is also a volunteer for the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. My apologies, Molly, I didn't see you back there. Okay, we'll start with Erin on the right.
You are the owner of the Simpsons store, correct?
Yeah, co-owner.
How do you see your own personal interest in that lining up with what Main Street does?
Main Street will make or break us, we are a business on Main Street. I think that all of Main Street's success, or lack thereof, is directly tied to our success and vice versa. We work really hard with our neighbors and businesses to try to do like some collective events, because we know that just feet on Main Street will help everyone, so, thank you.
What skills and perspective would you bring to the board?
Perspective would probably be a little bit newer to town, I've been here three years, but the business just opened, so we definitely have like the growing pain perspective. Personally, I am very organized, I'm a very fast learner, highly educated, I think that I would, I know too many Robert's Rules of Order, so I can hit the ground running in that aspect, but I, yeah, I think that I would, my professional experience probably lends more experience to the board than anything.
Thank you.
Have you attended any of the meetings?
Uh, I watch the Historic Main Street sometimes when I know there's exciting stuff going on, but I don't, I haven't attended it for some.
Are you familiar with some of the board members?
Yes.
Okay. I just kind of want to know if you have a little knowledge of what goes on during the board meetings and stuff?
I do, I won't say I was recruited, but I was encouraged by the current board members to apply, so, I mean, except for Margie. We're gonna have a lot of friction, I think, but between.
In other words, you know what you're getting into.
Yeah.
Manny?
Thank you for applying. We do need as much as many people active as we can, especially on Main Street, in the direction that we're trying to go. Question being that we're being, we're such a small community, Main Street does not just encompass one street, we encompass the entire community. How would you kind of address the outreach program through the other small businesses and home-based businesses that are in town that contribute, to be part of it and bring them together?
Yeah, I think it's just communication, and like I said, outreach, just letting people know, letting businesses know what Main Street, what the board does, and that it is, it does apply to them, since it's a full commercial district. But yeah, it's usually lack of information or, you know, outreach. So if businesses haven't heard that they're part of it, they don't know that they could benefit from it, but I would love to reach out to more businesses. Like I said, we, we have great partnerships, speaking of the store, we have great partnerships with all of our neighbors and all the businesses around, we know everything that's going on, we get a ton of tourism, so we kind of have a cheat sheet of like, we, I know all of the hours to every restaurant in this town. It, truly, people come into the store and they're like, "What's going on today? Where can I eat?" And we just have to be ready to get the rundown, so I probably know more about a lot of businesses in town than people think that I do.
Thank you so much.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, good, how are you?
Good to see you.
You, too.
Good to see you, you're in work mode.
I, it's true.
What do you do to balance that out to, as far as being on this board? What do you see so far as time constraints, and how do you decompress when you're wanting to be away from the work situation?
Yeah, still, I would say that there is not a lot of non-work time currently, but it's okay, I knew what I was getting into, and I actually will be freeing up a lot of my bandwidth, because unfortunately I'm stopping hosting trivia weekly because it was too much time, so now I have so much time to commit to other things. But yeah, it's a great question. I worry a little bit about burnout, but I also know that this is so important that it's sort of, you know, it's part of the gig.
Molly, first off, I want to say thank you for the business you run. It's, you go in there and you can really tell it's a labor of love, you have a lot of products that aren't available elsewhere in Trinidad, so I appreciate the option of being able to get those there.
Thank you.
So, you, in, in your letter, you said, and earlier you alluded to the fact, or experience of Robert's Rules of Order, what specific involvement was that that gained you that?
I have worked for the federal government, I worked with the White House briefly, I was, before moving to Trinidad, I was working at the Intern General's Office, and also volunteering for a Denver, a City of Denver, community engagement thing, and worked at the Colorado State Legislature for a while, so it's just one of those things I absorbed, I guess, like, you know, mostly the State House, I would say, that's all, all rules of order, everything.
No, that answers the question, I was just curious. I have no further questions, but thank you.
That's very interesting. So is that a step down White House to Trinidad?
Uh, you know, it's a, it's a pretty lateral move, I would say. I wasn't getting paid there either, so it doesn't really matter. I love to just from free job to free job, and just like literally throw myself into it.
That's very interesting. I know a lot of people would be very unhappy that you're not doing trivia anymore.
It's, it's gonna break some hearts, mine included, but it was one of those, one of those things that I just had to have to recall.
You have put your money where your mouth is, so to speak, by investing money on Main Street, and that shows me that you've got really the right kind of interest for the community, and I really appreciate you being new to the community, to be able to come and do that, I really appreciate that. I mean, it goes without saying, all of you that have applied for positions on boards and commissions, and I always say it all the time, but I appreciate it, I really appreciate your professionalism as well. So thank you, Molly.
Yeah, that's all. And yeah, Thursday is my last night of trivia, so if you want to, it's gonna be a little bit debaucherous if somebody wants to.
I have, I have intern chief's email, uh, cellphone, I'll be there, and if somebody hits kitchen or something.
You might, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just streets might be a little bit riotous Thursday nights, so I apologize for any.
Well, he's got, he's got that.
Perfect.
All right.
All right, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Second commission that we're asking for a board member is Historic Preservation Commission. We have one vacancy, and the applicant is Lisa Gloriosos.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Lisa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So give us a little idea of why.
Well, as my family says, I'm a giant nerd, and they call me that all the time. I love, I have a profound interest in Trinidad history, specifically the architecture of our beautiful community, and I don't exactly know what entails being on this board, but I am ready to be dedicated, and I'll work hard, and I'm extremely passionate, and I'm pretty knowledgeable about our buildings, because I spend a lot of time in the history room at the library, researching what Ken Fletcher set for. And I wish I would have spoken to him while he was alive, that's one regret I really have, but I want to continue kind of what he started and put it out there in the community. What else? Oh, I write with Ruth, with World Journal, Ruth Stodch Hill, we've done some articles on the buildings, we did like a break-in time feature, so I use a lot of the research that Ken Fletcher did to present to our community, and in the World Journal, excuse me, and the Chronicle News. And yeah, I'm just, I'm very interested, I'm very, something I'm very passionate about, and if it's a way that I could give back to our beautiful community of Trinidad, I would love to have that opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome. Erin, you're first.
First off, thank you for your interest and desire to be involved, and I work with Barry Wilson at Evergreen, so I knew your interest in architecture through discussions with him, because probably Kylie, I would say.
Yes.
Thank you for that, and, and desiring to be so involved. Do you, do you have any vision of what you would specifically want to bring or see changed or reinforced through that process?
Well, yes, I would like, so one thing that bothers me are some of the buildings that are in town that I don't sell. Well, first of all, they need to be appreciated, and I don't know the means to get them to be restored, I don't know, like, but I want to be involved with preserving our buildings in whatever way that looks like, and like I said, I really don't know much about the expectations of being on this board, but I will learn, because I'm a fast learner and I have passion and I'm a hard worker, so I will do whatever it takes to try to preserve our buildings, so I hope that's the right answer.
No, that's a, that's a fantastic answer, I mean, so you have, you have a lot of desire and real passion behind there to, to cause that to be put in place, so.
Like the Hoffa Opera House, for example, that bothers me, it is so beautiful, and it's such a historical gem, and right now it's just like a jungle gym for raccoons.
Yeah, that's a, that's an adequate description, I would say, but no, that, that answers my question, I appreciate your interest.
Not really a question, a statement, though, I appreciate the passion, I like the drive, I like that you want to be in the footsteps of Mr. Fletcher, that's very important, that's key. And I'm just excited for you to, you, you're bringing energy to this, to the, to the Main Street, I'm sorry, to the architectural board, so, so excited for that, so.
Manny?
Kind of along the same lines, I'm glad you brought Ken Fletcher, because we used to have some wonderful conversations during the day, and I, God, it was just amazing, it was a sad loss for our town when he passed away. Is there anything, is there one particular building in town, other, I know you mentioned the Opera House, that you would love to see completely redone?
Yes, I would love to see the Burrella Building, yes, Burrella, yeah.
Yeah, it is Burrella.
It is.
Which one's the?
The one right next to the Isle of Sugar, that one, on Commercial, across all Frank Images.
That's one of my favorite buildings, too.
It's beautiful, I love it. In fact, I made a Facebook post a couple weeks ago that if I win the lottery, I'm gonna restore that building, I'm gonna buy it, restore it, and, yes. That's my plan, it's not working out yet, I won the lot, although I'm sure trying.
I share the same passion on that one, so thank you so much.
Of course.
Frank?
You did mention that you haven't attended any of the meetings, have you watched any on Zoom or anything? I mean, do you have any idea what?
I don't, I have no idea what I'm getting into, but I'm going 100%.
Do you know any of the board members?
I know Shannon.
Have you talked to her about what goes on at the board? I mean, if you don't know, I mean, maybe it's a good idea to find out exactly.
Right, yeah, I have talked to her, and she actually is the one that kind of nudged me into doing this, and I saw it come up, and I'm like, well, here it is, I should apply.
No, I mean, that's, that's great, it's just, sometimes you get into something you don't know, and it's kind of tough to get started with it, but yeah, your enthusiasm should carry you through, so thank you for putting in.
Of course.
Thank you, Lisa, my, my question is kind of interrelated with Councilman Williamson's, in your opinion, you know, we face a lot of challenges, so what do you believe are the most important challenges and opportunities?
I would really like to see the existing buildings that we have be repurposed and restored and utilized. And like I said, I'm not sure how exactly that happens, but I want to be part of that.
So, any thoughts about long-term strategic planning? That's what you're pretty much leaning to, right?
Right. I just, once I'm involved, hopefully with this board, if you guys choose me, I'll see what it's about, and then I have a lot of resources, so I'll look into, like I said, I'm dedicated, and I'll work with them in whatever way I can to preserve our buildings.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for applying, I appreciate the energy that you're going to bring to this group, it's, you know, sometimes it's kind of technical, and, but I think that when you keep in mind where you want to take the city is, it keeps you focused. I noticed that you work for the Trinidad Middle School.
I do.
And you've lived here all your life.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you think we can get kids in this town interested in all these old buildings?
Well, I talk about them a lot, it's part of, I do like this Getting to Know Me slideshow beginning of the year, we've, I've showed them the PBS special, like History Trinidad, I can't remember the title of it now, but I've showed that in our advisory classes, I'm always pointing out, my classroom's on the third floor, so I look out at the city of Trinidad all day, and I often point out the buildings to them, I talk about all of our bricks and where they came from, and I have a bunch of Trinidad bricks on my windowsill, so just having me as a teacher, they get a lot of that, because it's just, I'm passionate and interested about that, so I bring it up often.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Well, you've just hit on two things, you've got passion, and that's the hardest part, I can see how, excuse me, passionate you are, and anybody that can handle 20-some kids in a classroom, you can handle anything.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, I think you, you do a great job. And as far as the Opera House, there's something in the works for that, so don't fret about that, it's, it's coming.
Good.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Housing Authority has one vacancy, and we have one applicant, Ruben Vigo, come on up, Mr. Vigo. How are you?
I'm doing terrific, I think.
You've mentioned that you're, you've been on the Housing Authority for 10 years?
Yeah, I was on it for, I started in 19, uh, 2017.
Okay.
So it's almost, almost 10 years.
So give us a little idea of why you want to be back on the Housing Authority Board?
Well, I want to get back to the city and to the housing, to, because it's a business, and it's governed by you guys, and I think that open my na, it would, I think I can contribute to the operation of the organization and make it grow for the better, not for the worst, you know? I want to see it really strive, so if housing can improve, it also improves the city, that's how I see it.
Thank you. Erin?
Do you think we need to include, to increase the number of housing, the, oh, sorry, do you think we need to increase the housing inventory that is supervised by the Housing Authority in Trinidad?
Yes. I would like to see more, more buildings put up for people that are less privileged to have that, you know, that's, that has to be down the future. I see that eventually we can build more one, one step at a time to get it to where we need it to be.
What are the populations that you see that you think are the most in need of housing through T H F?
The low income people that really need it. You know, there's people that can't afford these nice houses, well, they're all nice houses, they're in their own, but housing will provide a good home for them and it's a stable one, you know, they can all stay at home. You know, as long as everything's on the level, that'd be perfect for them.
Thank you.
Hi Ruben.
Hi.
Thank you for your service the last decade or so. What are your, your views on board members transparency and accountability?
I would like to see all the board members present, you know. I, I like to see faces and we need, that's what a board is supposed to be about, seeing faces. And I understand that sometimes nobody can make it, you know, health, family, whatever. If you can't make it, it's fine, it's fine with me, but just to not show up or whenever you want to show up, that's, that's not classified as a board.
So how should a board balance transparency and confidentiality?
Everything that happens in a meeting should stay in that meeting. Once you walk out of the building, no, no, no more business should be conducted, which stays, goes on in the building, stays in the building, not outside.
Okay, thank you, Ruben.
Ruben Hood runs the housing. Do they have any plans for building any new homes or anything in the near future?
I mean, we're looking at the board. We're looking to add new structures, remodel the ones that we do have to keep them up to code and that. You know, there's a lot of things that we can do and it's in the plans of getting it done, you know. We want, before things break down, we want to fix them before they go down and then we're out. Because one house means that one family don't have a home, so we always try to stay above it.
Does your Housing Authority only control the houses that are owned by Hood? You don't have any private individual homes?
We have Section 8, but that is the owner's control. We only subsidize the income for them.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious about that, how that works. But you do have control over for maintenance and stuff like that? I know that homeowner does everything, right?
The homeowner does everything on the Section 8.
Okay, thank you.
Annie.
So, thank you for your interest again and wanting to serve, serve some more time on, on that, on this board. My question is, in your purview, have you, is there any plans on looking at the community for improvement, not just development, but as far as evaluations for the community to go through and see what could be improved upon? Have there been any discussions or?
Not really that brief. We've discussed it, but I think if we keep our units up and everything else and well-maintained, it's a positive for the city.
Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate you, appreciate your service. I've been doing this for a while.
I try to do my best.
Uh, how are you familiar with the board? How, how familiar are you with this board and what?
The housing board? Yes.
And what new, new technology or new information do you have for the board?
I've done construction. I worked for the state for 24 years as a maintenance mechanic there at the Trinidad State Nursing Home and then I retired from there. And I think from the knowledge that I have, that I can contribute some of that knowledge to the, the housing of the town.
No new, no new technologies or new, I mean, you said you brought up retirement. That, that's interesting. Are you, you don't, you're not ready to sit down?
No, 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 no. I don't want to retire yet.
Yeah, keep on pushing, right?
Yep. Matter of fact, I still work.
Right, okay.
I've had, retired from the state. I went and worked with the cemetery for 12 years, left there and now I'm working J M Tyre.
Okay, alright. No, that's some good information. That, that means you're still in it, you're still in it and winning.
I'm here to, to give to the community.
Right.
You know, I could do like the rest of everybody else and say I retired, I want nothing to do, don't bother me, but no, I just, I feel that I can still contribute something to the city. I need to have a mirror over here so I can see this.
That's right, that's right. I'm glad that you're still able to be a part of the community and still.
This community's done a lot for me too, so I can't look away from it.
Ruben, thank you for your interest and desire there. So, when you're on, when a board is in existence, a lot of times the historic functioning of the board, what has been done in the past, was been tried in the past, has a lot of influence on what you will do or need to do. So are you involved in anything currently that you think is important to see through to, to the end there? Is there anything you can speak of that, highlight that?
I would like to see more units put up and the ones that we do have, like I said, kept up to
Sure.
modern standards.
Okay.
Because some of them are 30, 40 years old.
Right. I have no other question.
What is, what is the role of a board member on the housing? Do you pay, give, give me a rundown of what you do?
Okay, the board just helps the director what she needs to do and she reports to the board of what items need to be taken care of, how Hood reports to her and she reports to us and what needs to be done and stuff like that. We just sit there as a governing board.
Okay. Do you set policy?
What's that?
Do you set policy?
Well, yes and no. The director does that and she brings it through us and we either approve it or disapprove it.
And she needs your approval?
Yes.
Okay. So you've been on there for 12, 10 years and you're willing to go back for another round, so I-
A punishment, yes.
Pardon?
A punishment, yes.
Alrighty, thank you. It's inadequate, I feel inadequate asking people questions because I think the mere fact that they've applied and they have a general interest and knowledge, I think is, is fine. So thank you, Mr. Rehob. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your thanks.
Thank you. Last but definitely not least, Mr. Norris is, has applied for the Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission. There's two vacancies and only one applicant, so come on up, Mr. Norris. You are the next contestant. So tell us a little bit about, you're on the, you're on the board now, aren't you?
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, we did a term and a half.
Okay, so tell us a little bit about why you want to come back.
Well, first off, I think that it's a quasi judicial board and not knowing, not having grown up, rather, excuse me, not having grown up with other community members gives me the opportunity to be impartial on, on the issues. I, I agree with the vision statement that we've got for the community and the Planning and Zoning Board has the opportunity to help, you know, complete that, so we'll achieve.
Alrighty, sir. Mr. Williamson.
John, the P and C's obviously a really important board to the community and as you referenced, it's, I think, one of the few, if not the only quasi judicial boards, so instrumental to shaping Trinidad's future. Can you share with us any vision you have of anything that, that you think you would like to see? I hate to use the word change, but any influence you might like to see or upcoming important junctions in the road that we should be anticipating?
What I would like to see is, I would like to see more infill as, as stated in the documentation. And, and that's kind of difficult because we don't necessarily have the items that are brought before the board. I mean, we don't get the opportunity to solicit for, for people to come before us, so, you know, if, if people want to do developments that are out, at the, at the outer edges of town, then, then we don't have a whole lot of say in, you know, changing that, so that would be my, my frustration now.
Okay. Sincerely, thank you for what you do for the community. I think in so many ways, it's, I don't think there's a better way to express it, but it is very often a thankless job, but I know I can say with certainty, we, we appreciate the effort that you're putting in. So thank you for that. I have no further questions.
Name it.
Well, what did Erin say? I heard her say it's a thankless job. So how do you manage being a team player on a thankless job?
Um, it's, I get a lot of satisfaction when, when the opportunity to stand up for the little guy presents itself, that's enough to
Keep you going.
To keep me going for a long time.
A lot of work to do, right?
Is there any answer? No further questions.
Annie.
One to that, to read right all the way across the board. Thank you. We need as many people as we can in these positions to kind of keep us moving forward. This is a very important board and time constraints, do you have any? I didn't notice anything on there. If you were, if you had any time constraints or conflicts that would interfere with any of your duties?
No.
Okay.
No, I, I've got one of the best attendance records.
Awesome, thank you. That's all.
Oh, you've been on the board? Are you on there now?
Yes.
I mean, I just kind of-
Yeah.
Yeah. How do you, does the board get along? Do you guys seem to work together or is there any improvements that you could bring that you might make a suggestion?
No, we had several trainings on, you know, from DOL on, on procedures and protocol and, and there was an earlier question about transparency and, and, and that's important, right? Very important, so.
Thank you for your interest, sir. What is your perspective on the importance of diversity and inclusion on a board, or on this particular board?
It is very important to have a diverse board because, yeah, to help balance out the community, you end up to get, one ends up getting, I guess, the, the demographic of, of the, the white male that's on the board, but, you know, I mean, we, we do, we are working on diversity a little bit. We have, we have a woman.
That's a start.
So, I mean, I, I mean, I don't, you know, there's not much I can do about that.
Now, you guys worked very hard when we did the land code revision and I'm sure that took hours and hours of your time. I sincerely appreciate that. Is there anything, as you've been going through each of these cases that are brought in front of you that you thought, you know, if the city would do this, this could, would make this easier to resolve? Are there any examples like that that you've seen?
No, we, well, the, the revisions of the, of the code that we went through were, were strongly focused on, on that and so many of the, many of the issues that are, are, they come, well, they're delegated to the city. We only get the issues, only issues that need to be decided upon are presented to us. So that, that's helped tremendously, you know, cut down the number of just routine, you know, I mean, yeah, if you're going to vacate an alley and there's, if it doesn't affect anybody, then you don't need to have a meeting.
That's wise. Oh, and the infill, infill idea, have, you have any thoughts about how the city might incentivize that?
I mean, I, I think the, you know, to simplify the process, you know, we did a lot of clarification on the accessory dwelling units and that kind of helped. I don't know how you get that information out to the, to the public and the people that need to, to know it because, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, we-
To more education.
Yeah, more education from the, from the community about what, you know, I think there is a lot of people that would like to have a, an accessory dwelling unit, you know, you've got an aging population so you can, you know, have a caretaker be there or, or you can put, you know, a family in there and then the person that's being taken care of can be in a small warehouse. So there's lots of things you can do to-
Good. I'm glad we're moving in the right direction. I think people are not feeling like it's any sort of a Byzantine process anymore. It's just a very straightforward process for anyone to develop land, so it's good.
It says on your application that you've served one and a half terms?
Yes.
Where does the half come in?
Um, I start, I replaced a, a board member that stepped down.
Okay. So how many years is that?
Probably six.
Six years. And I noticed that you did two DOL trainings?
Uh huh.
So you have the perseverance and you have the training, so I have, I have no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Mary, if I may?
Yes.
I was wondering, have, have you given, because, I mean, it's two vacancies with one applicant. Have you personally, because that's the only person you can answer for, given any thought to how to potentially generate interest for the remaining vacancy?
Well, no, I, I haven't because I would have expected that there were, that there was at least two people for, you know, one for each vacancy, so.
It was purely curiosity. And then the last thing I want to say, if you're, if you're fortunate enough to run the gauntlet and be confirmed, and I suspect it's probably the case.
Yeah.
I'll go out while I'm living there. Please just confer to the board our appreciation for everything that you guys do there. It's critically important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that is a completion of item one. We will not vote on this until Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
Consent agenda or individual?
I imagine consent.
I agree.
You'll be taken care of.
It will. A consent agenda seems appropriate.
Okay. Item number two is crime, litter, biological waste discussion, vibrant issues and graffiti discussion. Do you recall Mr. Downs was unable to be at our last meeting? So we needed his legal input and his knowledge regarding the recent overturn, approving of Ben Oregon's camping rules. So, Mr. Downs, it's up to you. So, Mr. Downs, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. And hopefully you have all of the materials that we provided for you guys. And what we wanted to do, staff, wanted to do was to give you as much information as we could reasonably could, have all the players here so you can ask questions of them, including Acting Chief DeHunovic, Jen Lay, Chief Bakerack from the Fire Department is here, Des Sandoval, have all the people here that we could get to answer questions and really just kind of, you know, not only answer questions, but give you this information and receive more guidance from you, let you guys talk about it more and get kind of more direction and more guidance from you, and of course, answer any questions that you have that we will readily have the answers for those questions that you may post to us. I do want to let you know that in your information, in your packet, is first of all, the first five pages of the City of Grants Pass versus Johnson case. It's a 42-page case, so I didn't want to give you the whole case, but you can see from the head notes what it stands for. If anybody wants a copy of the whole case, I'd be more than happy to do that, because the mayor said, that is the recent Supreme Court case that says that municipalities can have a camping ban. So, that was that case from the last legislative session. And then you also have in your packet, the state statute that defines the word loitering. It's not a state offense. All state statute really does is, defines loitering and then like loitering in school zones and various other things or criminal behavior without loitering itself. So, you know, these ordinances, this is your packet, Des's handwriting, she made a list of all the things that we needed and I appreciate that very much. And then, so you have in here ordinances on general provisions, utilities, especially as they relate to anti-delapidation issues, easements, building anti-delapidation ordinances, offenses pertaining to the public peace and morals, including disturbing the peace, unlawful assembly, loitering, loitering in a school zone, and then offenses against property, defacing public property, defacing private property, trespassing theft, I have trespass, again, there are no such a why, nuisance and the provisions regarding biological waste. And you know what that is a euphemism for. So, with all that being said, I think we'd like to hear from all of you and again, answer any questions you have.
Aaron, do you have any questions?
I don't have questions so much as I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I think, you know, over the last several weeks, we've heard, first at the work session and Mr. Downs, I know you weren't present and not able to be so due to prior engagements. I understand that. And then, secondly, at the last city council, we've heard from a lot of citizens. And I think it's important that we all acknowledge, this is never us versus anywhere you want to enter there, but I think it's important to mention publicly and, I mean, I think we all believe and feel this, but it's important to mention publicly. This is about all of the citizens of Trinidad having the right to use both private and public property in a fair and equitable way. And that means not negatively impacting the use of anyone else's equitable use. We all have to follow rules and be good stewards of our town and law-abiding citizens. So, I'm just going to mention a few things and probably someone has a more complete list than this and I would be interested to hear it. And I know, first off, I want to say, I've had several compliments given to me from several business owners downtown that have said, they have seen an uptick in police presence trying to control the behaviors that we're talking about. So, thank you very much to the police for doing that. So, I'd like to make these requests and then I fully understand that after, let's say we get away from the magic wand and have these requests granted, well, then that's when the hard part starts and that's going to take a lot of work, potentially more money, staffing, so, but we can't even get to any of those situations until, I would think, we have the ordinances in place, so.
Aaron, before you continue, try and do just one or two so we can give everybody, maybe everybody else.
Sure.
We don't have time constraints, but if they have, if they have ideas as well.
I appreciate it. What I'd like to see is legal counsel, and this is, just, I'll share this list, write up, strengthen loitering ordinances, deface and trespass ordinances, camping ban as far as we can get that, Commercial Street, the river, Main Street, whatever. I do know that there's cities that have no panhandling ordinances and they're based on involvement and safety concerns with traffic. I think we should have no panhandling ordinances. Write park curfews ordinances and the ability to enforce those. I don't know if we have it now, but we should have a park usage permit with specific rules governing use, time allotment, vacating premises plan, cleanup instructions, and maybe even a deposit. This would be per use, not for, per day. Some way to interact with local businesses to encourage people being trespassed and cited for crimes and also a way to encourage businesses to limit free Wi-Fi, to limit congregation. And then, I did want to ask about the status on the city agreement to house people at the county jail. That's as much as I have.
What was the second one, please?
Wes, I'll send this to you, but defacing public, private property and trespass. Thank you.
How do you want to do this, counsel? Do you want to go one by, just give, how would you like us to do this?
That'd be fine. I mean, it seems appropriate to have everyone calm down, police department.
Whatever he's, name it.
Are you done, Aaron?
I'm done.
Well, it's not really a question, but I do want to know, how's the team on that side, fire chief, I mean, the fire department and the police department and all the other departments? Are you guys ready to tackle this? It seems like we're moving forward with the ordinances and different laws and regulations that are going on in different states. So, it's a difficult task for us homeless and houseless and people with mental illness and people who are just vagons. So, on your guys' end, are y'all ready to tackle, I mean, you've been tackling it, but are you ready to put the nail in the carpet on?
Can we have them speak when you're all done? So, that's okay?
All right, well, the question is, I want to know you guys.
Just remember the question.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Manny?
My question was actually for interim chief.
Okay, well, do you want to wait?
Yeah, I'll, my other statement was, I just, I know we're getting ready to put all these through and, yeah, you know, I'll just wait for my question. I think it's just going to work better that way.
Okay. Gee. I don't know. I think what I see is that we already have a lot of laws that are on books in our ordinances and so I'm wondering how enforcement of that, are there any ones that are just not, the way they're written, particularly helpful to law enforcement? And if there are any things that we can also outlaw that so that owners of businesses that are trying to make a living downtown have an effective way to deal with things that are interfering with their business, including loitering or just something more powerful than just move along? Because it's, it really does deter people from coming into their businesses and it's not a good look for people coming downtown for the first time. So, I'm wondering if there's anything else we can do to deter that kind of behavior downtown? I'm wondering, is there a permit that we need in parks? Like, if somebody wants to have an event in a park, do they have to get a permit?
Yes, there is a process.
Do the people who gather there every morning have a permit?
I do not think so, but I believe they've contacted the pastor about that.
Because that might be good to have a permit that specifies you can be here from, you can have the gathering from this time to this time and afterwards it needs to be completely cleaned up and then people clear out.
That's, that's the problem, is completely cleaned up because they're not very cleanly.
Right, so I think that's just holding, holding them, they're using public property, holding them to the same standards we would anybody else who's going to use it. I think is really important. That's just generally, it really troubles me to listen to people who are putting their life and their livelihood on the line, who come to us and tell us, we need help. And then we just, well, I want to know what we can do, if anything, and that we are doing it.
Really, what I, I mean, there's two things I'm interested in. I want legal advice as to how far we can use that Supreme Court ruling to get rid of tents and stuff. Is there any caveats that say you can get rid of them, but this is what you have to do? You know, I'd like your legal opinion on how that pertains to us. And the second thing I'd like to do, I see there's a ton of ordinances, but I'd like to hear when the interim chief and Detective Sergeant Lay comes up, what we can do as a counselor to help him. Okay, those are the two things that I think are more important. I will tell you, I'll give you just a little preface. So, after the meeting Tuesday night, when all the business people from that area of the 300 and 400 block of North Commercial Street came in and were upset about what was going on in that area of the town, I called Detective Sergeant Lay and she said, Mike and I will be down at your office in a few minutes and we're going to walk and see what's. And that was more telling, that half hour, 45 minutes, that the three of us walked to the park, Pastor Clay had just left and the remnants, there was some remnants of breakfast thrown all over. But the most important part is after we looked to see what was going on. We went to Inbain, we went to Smoker Friendly and we went to the Animus Grill. And all three of us talked to all three of the people that came that night. And it was, it was very interesting that they didn't realize, they have to call the PD every time there's something suspicious. So, they've been holding back on calling the police department on some of these issues and for a good reason. They don't want to bother the PD because they think there's a lot going on, which there is. But I think it was a back and forth, passing of information from them to the business owners and back and forth. And we, I got a really good feeling that that helped with the situation, that we didn't want them to feel that their, their concerns fell on deaf ears. So, I'm just going to say Mike and Jen. It's easier, it's faster. No disrespect, but Mike and Jen did a great job. You know, they know, they knew what to ask and how to reassure these people. So, I think that was a step in the right direction and they both have ideas as well. So, without further.
Mayor, I just wanted to add one thing, because when you rushed to me, then I forgot to say it. I just wanted to very clearly say, I know that we have a lot of these ordinance, but ordinances, so what I, what I meant to say is that of all that list I made, I think that we either need to create or strengthen what we have to live in, within the legal limit of it. That's the only, that's the only correction I want to make. Thank you.
That's a lot of information.
It is. It's a lot of subjects.
It's a lot of subjects and I apologize because I was at Peony Island Canyon all day today, so I really didn't get a chance to see this, so I'm going to study it at Gend and maybe we can go from there, but I'd like to have the two police officers come forward and.
Please.
Give us their perspective.
Counsel, Mayor, thanks for having us. I appreciate everybody's input on these matters. Like I told you the last time, this, this situation is not, it's kind of hard to like take it in, these are human beings and it bothers them to us as well. And that's the reason that she has stepped up to help with the homeless coalition, that spearheaded the process for that, as well as the co-responder program for, for mental health and stuff. So, good job, Jen. Thank you for taking the lead on, on stuff like that to help us through these problems, so.
I think what I would say is what you all are saying is such a multifaceted issue. It's not just a code issue, it's not just a housing issue. There's so many layers to it and I don't think that we necessarily disagree with tougher ordinances. However, until we get some mechanisms in place, it's not really going to do any good at this juncture, in my view, and Mike and I have had a couple of discussions, it's okay if I call Mike, right? Mike and I have had some discussions about this at our office because what, what we did in the past isn't going to work now. So, we've had, homelessness has been an increasing problem within the city of Trinidad since I started here 12 years ago. We started out with two or three genuinely homeless people and now it's escalated. But we don't have, we don't have any of those mechanisms in place to fix some of the problems that are leading to homelessness, so increasing laws isn't going to help. And what we were doing just a few years ago, we'd see a camp and we, you know, shuffle them out of here, like, you can't be here, you can't do that. Well, they're just picking up their camp and they're taking it 20 or 50 feet down the road and establishing a new area and that's a new place to clean up, that's other resources. The police department certainly doesn't have the resources to continue to push people to place to place that doesn't solve the problem. And what I think the coalition is really aiming to do is to put some mechanisms in place to start solving the, addressing the homelessness problem, because we're never going to solve it 100% unfortunately, as much as I would love to. It's just not going to happen. But to your point about ordinances, I don't think we necessarily disagree with that. It would help us in the long run, but it, it's now, I don't know if that's a, if that's the right move for us at this juncture.
Mayor, if I could, please, I think one of the problems that has been really expressed by counsel previously is like congregation of homeless people. And if you guys would please speak to that, like, let's say, you know, along the River Walk, people are frequently afraid to even go down there or use the River Walk because of the, for lack of a better expression, the accumulation of homeless people. So, I know the mayor living down there, but what, what is your policy and what are your thoughts on if you get a call that there's a large group of homeless people, you know, on the River Walk and they want you to take care of that? You know, so a congregation of, you know, homeless people or vagrants, let's say, I don't mean to use the two terms interchangeably, but I don't want to use homeless disparagingly, but a congregation of people either there or in Chaminade Park, you know, what are your policies? What are your thoughts on calls for those kinds of things if you know?
So, if they're obstructing, obviously, that's part of the loitering statute that says obstructing, impeding, interfering with, hindering, we definitely don't want people sleeping on the pathways or on sidewalks or in doorways. That, that stuff is addressed. If we get there and we don't see what was called to our problem, that's when we're going to refer. that's when we're going to refer it back to the person who called and said, "Hey, will you, will you give me a statement and complaint about the situation?" And that way I can go deal with it because that person has upped and left already. You know what I mean on that? So, but we follow this sixteen point five loitering police order to disperse. Simply standing in a group on the river without blocking, impeding, or hindering right now is not illegal, I guess you could say. Now, is there other illegal activities going on within that group? Where we're doing drugs or drinking outside in public or urinating in public or littering? Yeah, we do look for those. And, but if we don't see the person committing that act, it's hard for us to enforce it. So that's where I look for witnesses or people who've called in and stuff like that. So I have increased patrols, we have increased patrols. I've told them, "I know you guys are busy, please get out there." They want to see the parks and the Riverwalk and Commercial Street and Main Street areas. Well, anywhere there's a business in town. As you guys know, safely, missfrequented by some unhoused people. I don't, I don't know why they choose to have that, I don't know if it's the overhang or what causes them to gather there, but. So, yeah, I mean, if, if, if an illegal activity is observed by my officers, they've been told they need to address it.
But congregating alone is not, you know, to your point, a violation of a municipal ordinance, right? It's impeding, blocking, the illegal activity, gathering for illegal activity, things of that nature. What about like in Chaminade Park and like any thoughts about that? You, you know, you guys have heard the complaints also and I know that, you know, pastor Clay does a number of things. Any thoughts on having a different location for those meals that are done?
We've presented that to him in the past. We actually had them move to the municipal parking lot under I-25 closer to exit fourteen for a short period of time. And he claims that it wasn't fit for serving breakfast due to the noise and the pollution and things of that sort over there. So some type of a permit to pass out breakfast would possibly be helpful to that. The other thing that we brought up when we went to the park today is the community needs to be in that park. And it, you know, if, if they don't have an area to congregate in or, or having other events in that park or families are going to have their picnics there, I don't know that they would be inclined to staying and hanging out there all day and, and doing, you know, the things that they're doing. But merely just hanging out in the park, no, that itself is not. But there are other illegal activities, a lot of littering does come with it, but I don't have a police officer to be there all day and watch that, monitor that activity, unfortunately. We try to get in there as regular public. I was actually down there on Friday myself doing stuff. I'm hot above it, you know, I get out about as much as I can to do things. And kind of got some people that were on private property to move along and asked some others to pick up some trash, whether they followed orders or not, I'm not sure, but.
Did you find anything out about the Wi-Fi?
I haven't made it to McDonald's yet. That was something that we did discuss as well, that, you know, maybe the, the proximity to the free Wi-Fi at McDonald's does contribute to that specific location in the park that's right behind McDonald's. And it's really close access to that bridge that is not really visible to the public when you drive past it or go around it. The other bridges, you can kind of see underneath them when you go on different streets and stuff. That one's really hard to have an eye under there. We get, we try to get in there as much as possible too, but again, I wish I had a, a team that we can assemble to help with this situation within law enforcement, so.
Does, does anybody have any question?
I have a question if I may.
Sure.
First off, thank you both for all the work you guys do, it's a lot. And I know it's appreciated, so much so by the community that they called and said that to me. So thank you guys. You know, Councilwoman Odole Tree and myself both mentioned the permit for the park. And then Mr. Valentine, I think you said we have that in place, right?
We do have a permitting process in place.
So is, is there a fee associated? And if so, do you know what it is?
Well, two years ago, there was a fifty dollar fee for if, if you were using electricity. I do not-
Just, I think if, if we could, I know we can't make any decisions, but I think it'd be nice if there was a question for consensus because it takes city resources to take care of the bathrooms, put paper back in the bathrooms, clean the place up, go down there, do whatever it takes. I think if you're an organization using the park, I think there should be a permit for it and I think there should be a fee associated. I'd be curious as to the rest of council's consensus on that. If, if we have that in place, how, how is it enforced? And is that a huge burden to you? Because I think you mentioned it'd be helpful if the public was there. And I agree with you, it would be helpful if the public's there. But if you look at the park in the perspective from the public, breakfast for the homeless starts there, then they tend to occupy it through the day. And so it's not very comfortable for a family to go down and set up next to their encampment. And I've, I've actually tried this. You're, you're greeted with, well, I wouldn't say it's illegal activity. You're, you're most definitely made aware that that's not your place to be. I mean, that's, that's the way that it is. So if we can move breakfast out of there or make it within the rules of the permit, the public would have a lot better chance of using it. And that's what I was talking about, fair and equitable use of public property by all of our citizens. So I guess that's the question. Is that something that would be hard to enforce, the permit? Is it hard to add the fee? And what is general consensus of council, those three questions?
If I could, I'm just saying that the public relations, you know, possibility, I'm just throwing this out there, of charging a fee for feeding the homeless, I mean, that may not be-
It's not a fee for feeding homeless, it's a, it is a fee for the use of the park for your private event. That's what it's a fee for. And it would be applied to people if they want to have their annual architectural convention there. It'd be applied to people that want to have the farmer's market. It would be uniformly applied, so it's not targeting any one thing. It's not a fee for feeding people.
I didn't mean to suggest that, it's just that the event is feeding the homeless, sorry. And I hear you absolutely, Councilman, that they are using resources. There are, you know, the dedication of, of city, you know, resources to do that. But it just kind of amounts to charging a fee for them, you know, the event being the fee.
It was, in my opinion, what it amounts to is giving the public fair and equitable use to a place that they all pay taxes on.
Sure.
I'll take it after that, I'm sorry. I think by, by going the direction that you, that Councilwoman Williamson is saying, I think it's creating a responsible party. At this point, we don't have a responsible party at all. So if there was a permitting process, fee, no fee, ultimately, we know that they're down there. Does that help you in a way? Because that would go through and it wouldn't have to be police enforcement all the time. Parks can go out there and check out and say, "Okay, you know, they finished their, their thing and this is just destroyed." Whoever took out, said, "We're going to do this now," is now responsible for the littering and the cleanup. You know, and it's possible, maybe we can create something in that direction. I may be wrong, but that might be another thing to give you a little bit more resource with having, we already have staff that's going to be out there in the park, but allowing them to say, "Okay, you know, hey, this, this event just ended and I've got trash everywhere." Now we know who to call and say, you know, "Your event caused this amount of damage, possibly littering." You know, I mean, because I think that's in here under the, is that one of the defenses against property? Where we can have that in the permitting, I'm not sure. But if any of that makes somewhat sense, I think that's kind of my view on that portion of that.
What if we, I've got laid cramps. What if we set no fee to the permit? But who's the responsible party for this gathering? And then make one organization or one entity responsible for the cleanup of that park after it's, it's all said and done? Does, does pastor Clay try to teach them or explain to them, "Please clean up or respect private property or public property"?
I think he does to the best of visibility, you know.
We've both seen him have conversations with some of the population down there and saying, "Hey, come on guys, we need to be better."
I think, what, I, I had the same exact question, that what if he understood that, because the city was communicating to him, "We appreciate that you're doing a good for the community, but it's having these impacts and it can't continue if these impacts continue." So that he could say to them, "We have a permit to do this, we need to be done by this time and it needs to be cleaned up, or we could lose the right to get this area permitted to us."
So it's not just, and we're, we're singling out one entity that's providing breakfast, but also when we were down there, there just the other day, there was other people coming from the soup kitchen that had different kinds of containers of food. So it's, I think we're, we're singling out this one individual who's doing a breakfast or a whatever. And, and I don't know if that's the real totality of the, what's happening.
I, I think we're just doing that because he's familiar and we know that he's involved, but I think-
He's more organized than most.
Yeah, and I don't mean to penalize him. What I, I do though, think that he has a very strong voice with that community. And if he can talk with them and say, "We are permitted to do this because we follow these rules." If we don't follow these rules, we won't be permitted to do this any longer.
And I think that he would be a very willing participant in a conversation like this. And so maybe we missed an opportunity to have him here to discuss this with you all because I think that he would be more than willing to, to be a part of the conversation. But again, I don't think it's the totality of-
But I think that also falls though under our current permitting process for any of the parks. It's kind of pretty much, I'm just going to break the word. Leave it the way you found it. And if you don't, then of course, isn't that where our deposits come in and stuff? When they do that, we're able to keep that and say, "Okay." You know, it, this, it's all the way across the board. Everyone has to oblige. If you rent her, you're out there and, and it's just kind of just going through a common, I hate to say common courtesy, but it, it kind of is, you know? Leave it nice for your next neighbor to enjoy it. And if we already have that in our permitting process, because everybody else has to follow through with it. And I think one of the frustrations is, why is one group able to get away with it and another group is not? And I think if we're looking for equality, we need to have equality all the way down.
But there's a fallacy to that. The fallacy is the homeless aren't an organized group. So if somebody does something and pastor Clay said, "I don't-"
But, but the people that are causing the event to happen, and we keep using him as an example. So he would be responsible for having a permit for his organization. And if you want to take the fee, great. If the soup kitchen wants to go and disperse food there, now they are the permit requester for their event and they would be responsible.
They don't dispo, they don't dispute food down there, distribute food down there. They have to go to the soup kitchen. They don't bring it down there whatsoever.
I just mentioned, someone said they were-
No, they don't, they bring it down. I deal with this all the time, every day from the church there. We got guys, the soup kitchen, the guys down there, we got trash everywhere. And the big question is, if you get them out of there, where are they going to go? And, and you're going to end up maybe with a bigger mess than you think. I mean, you're, you're right, it's a tough solution. It's the same thing when you break up a crowd down the river, four or five people there. They're going to walk a few blocks down and stay down there. And they may be in areas that we really don't want them in. So those are problems to find out. And the same thing with the tents. If you tear them down, where are they going to stay? You know, you've got all these vacant houses, they're going to start using them. And then that's going to create more work and more problems. So right now, we're just kind of shuffling from one place to another. And we need to find, you know, a real solution. And, you know, to deal with some of those people are, I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, we tell people to pick up their trash from the school there and around the gym and that. They just look at you, "What are we going to do, grab them by the neck and bring them over there and throw it in there?" Can't do it. And then it just causes more problems. So we, we understand as much as you do. It's the same problem for us as for you because we're getting the complaints in Europe. We're not complaining to you, I mean, you understand what we're saying. But we need to find some way to not shuffle from one place to another. And I don't know how you're going to do that, I really don't.
I don't know the answer to that either, but I'm pretty sure that assistance coordinator position, now we're like ninety-nine percent sure to get, is going to be able to focus their entire efforts on exactly this issue.
But that can be done with the homeless. I don't think we're looking to get rid of them. I don't think that's where the conversation is going. We're not trying to say, "Get out of the park." We are, I think what we're, the discussion is, how do we figure a way to keep it maintained? And I don't think that's, that, we can figure that out. That is, I think that's in our purview, that we have the loitering, the littering. We have that, we have our Parks and Rec Department that are overworked, overworking, going constantly back out there. We just need to figure a way of keeping it clean and maybe conveying that thought more over there that you guys need to pick this up. If not, you know, this is what we have to do. And I know it's easier said than done, but I think that's what, I don't, that's my feelings on it. Just respect the spaces that you're in and they will be there.
When we're going down there, we are having these discussions and telling them, "Hey, please pick up after yourselves." Some are receptive to it, some don't say anything and some throw stuff back at us. But, you know, we're not trying to get into a fight down there with them. It's just like, "Hey, please clean up after yourself." You know, if they want to mouth off, we just move on to the next person or go about our business. And, you know, unfortunately, that's how society acts towards law enforcement sometimes. So, but we are having those discussions with people when we are interacting with them. We're telling them, "Hey, look, you're sitting there, you had lunch, you had three water bottles there, can you make sure that all ends up in the trash when you decide to get up and walk away?" So, and a couple of the officers have come across where they watched people walk away from a pile of trash in the park and have given them citations, so.
Now, is, are the citations working?
I, I don't sit in with municipal court very often, does with it, but. Lex is there, do you want to talk to, about anything going on in municipal court?
Well, it's always hard when you have a, let's say, a homeless person who gets a citation. Because if they show up for court, they're not going to be able to pay a fine. And they may, if they're, you know, able-bodied and also, you know, have all their faculties, they may be interviewed, community, community service in lieu of a fine. But that's kind of if they show up for court, they want to get the matter resolved. They're, they're physically capable, mentally capable, and that's just kind of a rare situation. You know, I mean, it's not often that a person, a homeless person gets a ticket and they, they take care of it.
Maybe the possibility is it's coming from the PD, it's kind of an opposition, oppositional defiance kind of situation.
That, or they don't have the means.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, to pick up the trash. You know, to get through. Maybe, maybe it does take the community leader in a way to go through and say, "Hey, guys, come on." You know, and they'll listen in that direction. And we know it's going to take the whole community, everybody, to kind of just get everything going. But maybe that might be, when the things were running across, PD's saying it and they're just like, "We're not going to do it."
Mike and I have also walked the whole river with pastor Clay before and said, "Look, we've got people in like a tent here and you can barely see them, they have it really nice, they're keeping it clean, they're down on their luck, they're sleeping in a tent." And then we've got this other situation where it was completely unkept, there was a lot of problems. I mean, we've pointed out situations to him and he's tried his best to address it. And then when he fails to address it with them, then we go back through and talk to the other city workers and we have to handle it a little differently. So we try to give folks as much grace and opportunity as possible.
I've got a question. I mean, I've got a ton of questions, but I want to stay focused, stay on less, stay legal. What about camping? Is there a way to address that? And then maybe we can start trickling into these other issues, but first kind of stay on task with it?
So we, we can have a camping ban for public property. And as this, this Eagle Pass case says, you can have a camping ban on public property. So the problem becomes when it's either private property or- So the problem becomes when it's either private property or you don't know. Mike had a good example this morning of, um, property down near the Boulevard Edition that was, we're not even sure who owns the property. And they were trying to do a quiet title on some of the property years ago. But it's, we can't regulate camping on property that does not belong to us. Right? So we can regulate camping and have, have a camping ban in, in parks and, and other municipal properties, but you can't really do that on private property or property where we don't know who the owner is.
How about within a certain distance of the river?
Set back.
Yeah.
Yes, I think, I think that could be done, although it would be, it would have to be connected to a legitimate, you know, government interest, like why we're doing that. But I think we could, we could do that for, for municipal property.
And that would kind of maybe keep them off of the private property, but private property becomes trespass at that point, doesn't it?
Well, yes, but then you have to have a private property owner complain. But to someone's earlier point, I'm not trying to talk you guys out of anything or make it more difficult. I, I think it may have been Jen who said that if you, if you tell them to move or they have to move, they're gonna relocate. And they probably are not gonna go very far, and so, you know, what have you accomplished? Not trying to throw my hands up or say, you know, you can't do that, they're gonna go someplace else.
Let me ask another question. What is the, I guess the relationship with you and Alamosa? You were saying how they are doing something over there and maybe we can mirror what, what they're doing over here.
So when I first proposed, um, the city kind of coming together to bring stakeholders in one room, I had reached out to Alamosa, um, they have an encampment site, they have a, I brought a couple of their folks down to our first or second meeting to kind of speak about what they have going on down there. They've got like street outreach teams, they have things much more organized than we do. But I've always envisioned us kind of following that path because they're a similar sized town to us.
And they still have a nice success rate going from when you first contacted them?
They, as far as I know, and I've, I've also spoke with Captain Messis down there multiple times throughout the years and, I mean, they don't have some of the issues that we're having to talk about right now.
Okay.
They did or they didn't?
They, they do not any longer have some of the issues that we're talking about right now because they've made a, a specific area for camping.
I guess what we're gonna have to do is wait until the coalition gets a coordinator.
Well, we're still, I mean, things are still gonna progress forward, not that I'm wrong, Jen, I'm so sorry. But my plan is still, as when Steve was here, Mr. Rucker was here, he invited me to the development team meeting. I've been to a couple of them, I wanna, I'll keep going. That, that's your team of city employees that know what, um, property you all have around here. I, I don't know how to read any of those maps, that's way out of my purview. But they, they can say what's available for, potentially available for something like that. And the goal, my goal is to try to identify at least a few areas where this could be feasible and present that to you all to make some decisions. That's, that's my goal.
I'm kind of going through with that, what Alamosa did and where they're at now with theirs. I think that gives us a head, a step forward, because they've already done what didn't work. Because I think as of now, they're tearing down the, the little, the huts, because they had huts that were put up.
Right.
And they've discovered they had to take those out. So we know that on our end, that wouldn't work.
But that.
The encampment area actually is the one that is working.
The encampment site has also led to other endeavors that they've been successful at about getting permanent supportive housing, which is ultimately where I think everybody wants to be. An encampment site isn't the end goal here, that's just the starting block for.
Yeah, because it involves the coalition, it involves housing, it involves us, you know? And I think that we're, we're on the right path, but like I said, we have a framework that exists now that we could, actually that's gonna help us.
I was just telling Mike when we were sitting back there, I received an email from the Continuum of Care at the Balance of State Board, which is kind of what oversees all the different regions. We're meeting on the ninth to keep pushing this process forward. So I won't stop anything and, you know, we want this systems coordinator, but I'll still keep working on this. It's something that I wanna see to, to the end.
And they, they know who we are down here, huh? And then we turn to that, we're trying to.
I cold call people all the time.
Sweet.
I, I don't care, I make people up, I call them, yeah.
Okay.
There were a couple of good articles as I was looking up some of these issues on things that the City of Aurora and Colorado Springs have done with their homeless populations. And they're really getting high marks for a lot of those things. I won't bore you with all that, but they have a very kind of holistic approach and I would be more than happy to send you guys those articles as well. I did wanna ask you, just so we're not kind of, you know, improperly connecting the two, I wanted to ask you, do you guys, do, you know, you or your officers, do you see like homeless people or vagrants very often engaged in other illegal activity? Like we talked about littering, but like defecating in public, sorry, but that's on the agenda. And, and I wanna talk also about the bathrooms, because we, we're talking about that a little bit this morning. You know, there is a permanent bathroom in Chaminot Park. And I know the city locks that at night and I understand that. But, um, anyway, I'm trying to organize my thoughts here. But do you see other illegal activity? Number one, do you, um, and are you, like, and I know the answer to this, but writing other citations for homeless people? And also I did want you to, to please speak to, because this has come up before, would extra officers help? Council has talked about maybe getting additional code officers to like patrol the Riverwalk, to patrol Chaminot Park. But just if you would please speak to that so we don't leave this session without addressing that. Sorry, a lot of, a lot of thoughts there, if you could.
Yes, um, I, I've spoke to council over a couple of times now and I've always said that we can use more help. So that's always obviously gonna be something that I would never turn down and would like it to be considered. There's more people in Trinidad now, we're growing a little bit, I think we can all say that. It's not stagnant right now, there's, there's some growth here. Your city services need to follow along with that growth. Police department, fire department, parks departments, all these departments need to be considered as following along with the city growth. So, um, yeah, public safety, I think should be placed at the top of that, of that list. In my opinion anyways, that's for you guys to decide. But, um, going back to other crimes in the Parks and Riverwalk area, there are absolutely other crimes and, and situations going on at the Riverwalk and the Chaminot Park area. There was a very serious assault that had happened there recently that has, um, had some pretty bad outcomes with it. There's drug dealing, there's drug use. We get reports all the time, especially from Pastor Clay and his people, that they are abusing each other and stealing from each other, sexual assaults and things of that nature. They're, they don't come forward to talk to us very often. But there's domestic violence cases and things of that sort. So it's, it goes beyond your littering and your loitering, it does. And, and we take care of that when we get those calls for services. If we're not getting called, we don't know what we don't know. And I feel bad when these people tell Pastor Clay or somebody else in, in, in their organizations that they're, that they've been a victim of something and they didn't call us. And that, that's very disheartening to understand that we're, our services are here for those people. It doesn't, you know, we're, we're, we're a very, you know, non-highest organization. We have to be there for everybody. So we're never gonna turn down services to a homeless person. There was a case of someone defecating on the sidewalk, it was taken care of and handled. Charges were filed. The bathrooms, I don't believe those bathrooms are unlocked. I don't think they lock, they don't think they unlock them. I mean, I think they're locked permanently now because of some very significant damage that had taken place to toilets. They're destroyed, I think. Uh, that would be helpful if the bathrooms were open, however, I don't want the city to incur more costs to have to replace infrastructure because people don't respect it. There's no cameras in there obviously for a reason, so if they break stuff, we don't know, can't hold anybody accountable. Is there anything else on that?
I think that's everything, thank you.
Okay.
Good memory.
What about camera, we've talked that day, about a camera.
Yeah.
On the east side of the park?
So I would love to have more, a more robust surveillance system throughout the Riverwalk, Chaminot Park area, downtown area. It's a little bit of an expensive venture, I was talking to James Worley about that recently. And he's willing to, to listen to me and hear me out, but he turned it back to me and said, Worley, I'd money for that. I think he said, well, more cameras means more servers. The software we have right now, Worley, isn't the greatest software, we're trying to, he's looking through some options for that. I believe he said a camera, each camera costs about twenty-five hundred dollars, but then if you're looking at splitting the cost of a server space up, you're looking at five to seven thousand dollars per camera. So it's a little, little pricey. But the good thing is, is the technology is a lot better than it used to be. Um, we got the four-way cameras, we got the ones you can move around. The resolution rate's really great on a lot of the cameras we're buying now, so you don't have to put as many because they can reach out farther a little bit and cover more ground. But we are working in an outdoor environment with trees and rocks and bridges and poles and hills and valleys and, you know, so that's kind of hard when you say, well, there's a camera here, but it doesn't catch over here. Well, should, should we add another camera over here or does this one need to be repositioned? So it's kind of tough. But yeah, I, I do feel that more surveillance system down there would, would be helpful. It would not be able to be monitored twenty-four seven by a human being to say, oh, look, something's going on, get down there. A lot of it's reactionary when we have to go back and do a, a follow-up investigation stuff for that. It's, it's, it's an option.
Real quick, um, instead of cameras, what about motion detectors or lighting or put some more disability down? Would that be an option or do, do we want it? Do we have lit, do we want the path lit, do we want it, you know what I mean?
And they did, the Safe Streets Grant did allow for us to add a lot more lighting to the path. Um, that Karen Wolf was involved in, so. And that was an option for me to think about too, is maybe we can revisit the Safe Streets Grant and say, hey, we want cameras down there now. So something to look at for the future.
Question, now, Mr. Valentine, what other options of funding do we have for public safety? Or options that we can look into in the future to kind of bring up either their budget or anything?
No recurring in your mind.
Right. So, yeah, I, I'll, I'll have to look into it. There's, there's always options for, for grants, so they're competitive, there's always a match. So I'll, I'll do what I can to get some resources together and look into it. Yeah, with the cameras, with the lighting, comes infrastructure, comes poles, comes power, comes, so it, I, I will look into grant possibilities.
Mayor.
Mr. Valentine, um, potentially Audra, do you, do you guys know what the status of the, um, arrangement with the county for housing in the jail is?
I sent, um, I sent the IGA to Sheriff Navrat for review and to Steve before he departed and less. So he's waiting for that legal review, but it's pretty standard language with, um, what the sheriff's used previously. So I think it's just a matter of that review and then it should be ready to sign.
Okay, thank you, Audra. So the other thing that I wanted to say is you don't have too many options. I mean, either a parent and their kids using this splash pad destroyed the restroom. Some, maybe a few of the people enjoying the farmer's market decided to go and destroy the restroom. Or a homeless person destroyed the restroom. I vote, I think I know who did it, that's my opinion. I really, really would like to see the use, the permit used put in place and a curfew developed. If we can, can we have consensus for those two things? Because right now.
There is a curfew, ten o'clock.
And I didn't, I didn't know that, so that, that is in P S.
Ten forty to five AM, we tell people.
Okay, so that takes one thing off my list. I'd like, I'd like to see the permit for the use of that park put in place. Can we have a consensus? Question on that, Mayor?
Do we have a consensus?
I think it's a good idea, I think if someone should investigate and see if it can be done beautifully and talk, talk with Pastor Clay as well to understand from him what some of the problems it might be to, to do it. I think I'd like to trust and investigate.
Yeah, we should, we should talk to him.
Wait, either.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
That was a yes.
Yes, for sure.
Yes.
That's a, that's a real general subject, so, yeah, for the time being, I say yes, let's look at it. Look at it and see, but I, I just can't, I don't know. You know what else I was thinking? Business, pretty simple. What about taking about three of those picnic tables off that cement pad? Because there's four of them there. That, that screams a.
We can do that tomorrow.
Huh?
We can do that tomorrow.
Let's go do it after five.
I'll, I'll help.
As, as we talked the other day, Mayor, I'm really hard pressed to take services, take amenities away from everybody to use the park, right? But, and then there, the concrete pad's still there, you saw that they were sitting on the ground. The, the table doesn't make any difference. It doesn't. They're sitting on the rocks on the ground and the grass. They're gonna sit where they wanna sit. It's, you know, I mean.
I take that back.
If I could say something, I think one thing that we would like to stress to people as we went down and spoke with the businesses is to call us and let us know what's happening. Because everybody that we spoke to last Thursday, I think it was, or Wednesday.
Wednesday.
They said, oh yeah, well, we saw this, but then never said anything, so how are we supposed to know what's going on? And they're like, well, should we call about this? And I'm like, absolutely, we should.
Have, have your calls increased since then, uh, do you think?
I mean.
Not since last week, no, but. We're getting more calls.
I think it just needs to be more publicly known. I mean, we're talking about cameras here and infrastructure and putting in a permit. Well, what about everybody that's already down there and sees stuff? You've got the bank right across the street, the bird's eye view, why don't you call us and say, hey? And, I mean, the officers are gonna be busy, but we don't know what we don't know. So if we, this is a community issue, it's not just a council or a police or a fire or a med issue. It's a, it's an everybody issue, so if we can get community buy-in to help us, I think that is a good place to start.
I'm a, I'm a frequent user of four, 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 and I really do appreciate what you guys do. I mean, I'm, it's always super professional and, um, and sometimes I see the resolution to that, so.
The public really needs to understand that they can call us at any time for anything. It's not like we're gonna turn them away or say, ah, that's not important, I'm not gonna look at it right now.
I've never been told that.
So, yeah, there, there's no time, and, and it's not bothersome to us, this is a job we signed up to do, right?
That's what people say, is we don't, I was afraid to call because it just didn't feel important at the moment. But if it's important to you, then it means it's important to us, so you should call us.
Mike?
Yeah.
You know, I was gonna ask you, you know, the problematic area at, down at Chaminot Park, have there been congregations at the other two parks, Kit Carson, because I always see people around there as well? Is there, is that a red flag area?
At, at times we've had some people hanging out at Kit Carson. It used to be, Zigo used to be a real hotspot for people to hang out in up there, but it's not, we don't get called there frequently or see as many problems there anymore. But it still happens, we do have a few calls in here and there. Um, and then Central Park, we're, at Central Park, sometimes over by the, uh, the lake, we'll get, um, someone kind of hanging out down there. We actually caught somebody sleeping in one of the old pine bushes that were those, like kind of hollowed out on the inside and there was like a, there was a camp on, on the inside of that bush.
Huh.
But they cut those bushes out, so we don't have that problem there anymore, so.
So when some of your people are on patrol, like the biomedical needles, things like that, do you even mess with that when you notice, when the officers notice something?
If we see something, to that extent, it'll be picked up, our, our officer.
Right away, before the city.
Right, because, well, I mean, we have a specialized container that we put those in.
Right.
The needles have kind of gone away, they're back to smelting things off of a piece of tinfoil now and then tossing the tinfoil into the, into the grass or wherever, so. Which is still, uh. Which is still biohazard. It's got that, a lot of biohazard, but a chemical hazard because of the drugs that are on it, so we have to be careful to touch those things as well.
I can have a little two-parter, so. But it's real quick, but back to just reiterating what, what I think what Mayor was saying about the tables. Each concrete pad, I believe, was designated for each one, right? In the beginning? And I think what she's saying is, they need to go back where they were, just because of the fact that it's also taking away from someone else wanting to have something down there, because they're all gathered, they're all pushed to one.
Remember, Mike, when that park was.
Are they bolted to all the separate ones?
They're bolted, yeah.
Okay, could, yeah, so they weren't bolted.
We, I didn't think of this, but.
The wooden ones are movable.
There's wooden ones that are around town and the other parks are movable, but the blue ones are bolted.
When Chino Park was first created, there weren't that many pub, picnic tables in one of those slot, slabs, were there? There's four of them there now.
I think, I think there were. I'll take a walk and check it out, but I trust that if they're bolted down, then.
Yeah, they are, they've been there.
If they weren't, they would have been moved all over the park to throw in the Riverwalk already, so.
My second part is, goes back to the communication thing, you have, you had stated that the community can call at any time, and I just believe that, that they possibly don't think they can. And I don't think we've had a community engagement with the PDA in a while, like kind of almost, I don't know how you would say that. Would it be, it wouldn't be a town hall, would it be just a community engagement, kind of, where they, the community could reach out to you, speak to you, ask you these questions we're asking, and possibly get feedback and that confidence to be able to call? I know it's a dangerous situation because of the staffing issue, but, but, you know, it's just, maybe it might be an outreach to where they're comfortable, when they see something, say something.
We, we can put out a notification as, through our, our, our website, we could share it with the city's website, and we can put it, hopefully, we'll get our Facebook back one of these days. It's harder to get your own Facebook back than it is to hack in and take over somebody's Facebook.
That's true.
And, you know, I'd like to portray some things out that way, to say, hey, see something, say something, campaign or something like that, that would be great. And that's, I like to do that, because that's where people go for their moves, with social media, right? Whether it's real or fake, so. It's the best way to reach somebody if you're trying to get out to, to, to them.
Any final thoughts? No, questions?
Do we have anything on the, I don't think the housing.
There was, it's not on.
My, my best lie, I may, Mayor, is, I, I think I would really like to see that permit for use, at least to review. I know the city staff has a whole lot to do, but I think, I think that would be really
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Can I see from it, the meeting?
Need Mike?
No, I need that. Oh. Thank you both. Yeah, thank you guys.
All righty, so I guess the marching orders is, we're still gonna do the camping ban?
Yes, and, and we will talk about that.
Okay. It's a, it's a work in progress.
Right, and we'll talk about panhandling and a number of other issues. You know, panhandling was a really hot, hot issue years ago, and I was wondering about that as, as I was, you know, getting ready for this meeting, but, but we'll talk about panhandling and we'll try to go through Councilman Williamson's list. So, but, but yes, I, I think we have, we have direction.
Thank you all. Mike, can you come back?
You're right, they'll call the traffic.